I call this meeting of the Onslow County Board of Education to order. And this is the purpose of our meeting is to consider the Board of Education's proposed 2018-2019 current expense and capital outlay budget. Just as a reminder, comments, statements, or other written materials may be presented in writing or presented orally to the Board of Education. And we have asked that anyone who is here to please register with their intent to speak. You will have five minutes that will be allowed. And cross-examination of speakers is not allowed as per our policy at this time. And members of the Board of Education may ask for clarification if necessary. At the end of this, we will be entertaining a motion to go into closed session. And at this time, I will ask if anyone has signed up to speak or anyone that is in the room would like to speak at this time. And we will sit here and wait for a few minutes just to make sure that some stragglers are not out there racing. While we're waiting, I'd like to recognize that we have Mr. Roy Spidded, who's one of our commissioners, in attendance, and we're glad, always glad for you to come. Since we have no one in the audience or anyone coming in the door to speak at this time, we will close these hearings. And I ask now that we have a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the open meetings law. Okay, a motion to go into closed session. And for the purpose of our closed session, we're looking at negotiating positions for materials or contracts and acquisition of real property. And we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we will go into closed session at this time in return. At this time, I would ask for a motion to return to open session.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now, at this time, I'd like a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Motion to adjourn, second.
And we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and we are adjourned. And now, I will call the meeting of the Board of Education to order the public meeting. And let me just explain to you what just happened, is that we had a public hearing on our budget previously at 5:30, and then we adjourned from that meeting, did not adjourn. We took a recess from that meeting and went into closed session for some discussion on things that we cannot do in public. And now, we have come back, adjourned our regular meeting, our regular budget meeting, and now are into open session. So, thank you for being patient and waiting for us as well as for not having enough room. I apologize for that. But thank you for coming. The first item on our agenda is, of course, to ask our minister, and I know that I have your name, Mr. Maurice. Yeah, Pastor Mervin Ervin from the Jacksonville First Baptist Church, and he is in at the Northside Campus, which I understand is really delightful and is fully packed every Sunday. We'd like to invite him to the podium where he will deliver our invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you that the entrance of your word brings light and that you watch over your word to perform it. Father, we bring before you the Onslow County School System and the men and the women who are in positions of authority within it. We ask you give them skillful and godly wisdom, that your knowledge might be present in them. We pray that discretion would watch over them and understanding would keep them. We pray that they would be men and women of integrity, blameless, and complete in you. We declare that their positions will be rooted in your love. Father, we bring our children and young people before you. We proclaim your word boldly and confidently over their lives. Give us eyes to see that our children are a gift from you. Grant us the desire to train our children in the way they should go, and when they are old, they shall not depart from it. We pray they shrink from whatever might offend you and discredit the name of Jesus Christ. Thank you, Father, that you give them knowledge and skill in all learning and wisdom and bring them into favor with those around them. Father, we ask that you would commission your ministering angels to go forth and police every area, dispelling forces of darkness. We surround the Onslow County School System with our faith, and we praise you, Father, that we shall see Onslow County School Systems walk in the ways of humility, virtue, and lifting up your holy name. And those who err in spirit will come to understand, and those who murmur discontentedly will accept instruction in the ways of Jesus Christ. Father, occupy first place in their hearts. We thank you, Father, that you are a delivering God, that you will allow the good news of the gospel to be proclaimed through our school system. And we thank you for the intercessors who stand on your word and the laborers of the harvest who proclaim it. It's in the name of Jesus Christ we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Will you join me and the board in the pledge, if you will stand and face the flag? I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of the agenda is before you, and as you've had time to look at that agenda ahead of time, I ask for a motion to approve the agenda as it's presented.
So moved.
Second.
And we have a second. Any comments on that discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next is approval of the consent agenda, and there are several items that you have had the time to review. So I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as it's presented.
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion, comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? Next is a good news spotlight, which I know is why we have such a large crowd tonight, and that's always a delight for us. So at this time, we will begin the good news spotlight and ask Mr. Ross Fribble, the Director of Digital Learning and Teaching Services. I love these titles.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Stout, executive staff, thank you very much for having us this evening. We had an exciting year of Battle of the Books, and I'd like to share that with you tonight. For those of you that don't know, Battle of the Books' purpose is a program to encourage reading. Students, regardless of ability, are exposed to quality literature representing a variety of literary styles and viewpoints by prominent authors. Through the fun and excitement of the competition, students improve reading and social skills. They mature in their choices of reading material and acquire a broader knowledge base. Even during the height of the competition, students and coaches know that the goal is to read, not necessarily to win. Most of our coaches would say that. The elementary competition this year consisted of 15 books with 16 teams competing. And after a four-day event in February, one team emerged and claimed the title as the Onslow County Battle of the Books Champions. This team went on to represent Onslow County in last week's regional competition, where they faced teams from surrounding regions, or surrounding counties, and they finished in second place. Please help me welcome the Battle of the Books team from Carolina Forest Elementary to the podium, and their coach is, their team is coached by Aaron Glover and Michelle Bailey. Team members include Kendall Kellum, Robert Niels, Sophia McGovern, Mackenzie Holland, Jaslyn Dean, Logan Alger, Alex Bopp, Carlin Barnes, Brittany Mincy, Sidney Mosley, and Jayana Flores. Congratulations, Carolina Forest! The middle school Battle of the Books competition is a one-day event in which all eight of our middle schools participated. Middle school teams are assigned to read 27 books. Our winning team represented Onslow County Schools extremely well in the regional competition against teams from around the southeast region. After a grueling day, they earned a third-place finish. Please help me welcome the Battle of the Books team from Newbridge Middle School to the podium. Their team is coached by Jennifer Sullivan. Team members include Eliana Arnold, Anna Ford, Dylan Gwynn, Juliana Coltik, Grace Rotz, Angela Capewana, Alexander Gopashad, Reagan Hartley, Sophia Levine, and Jack Rousch. Congratulations, Newbridge Middle! Thanks largely to our efforts here in Onslow County, this was the first year that there was an official state-sponsored high school Battle of the Books competition. The state selected 15 books for our teams to read and study, and all eight of our high schools competed. There is no regional or state competition yet, but I'm sure the state is working on that, and if so, this team would have been more than ready. Please help me welcome the Battle of the Books team from the Onslow Early College High School to the podium. Their team is coached by Rebecca Huggins and Deborah Kellum. Team members include Keyshawn Henry, Jasmine Hernandez, Christian Melton, Riley Bush, Cameron Davis, Tanner Murray, Emma Willie, Elise Machado, Anias Hawkins, Colin Davis, Tobias Standard, and Alyssa Sabella. Congratulations to the Onslow Early College Battle of the Books team. Thank you.
Further good news will be presented by Mr. Michael Elder, who is the Director of Career and College Readiness.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Stout, executive staff, thank you for the time to recognize another great group of young learners here. Our Odyssey of the Mind teams this year did exceptionally well across the board. Odyssey of the Mind is an international educational program whose mission is to create creative problem-solving opportunities for our students from kindergarten through college. Through solving open-ended problems, students develop critical thinking skills that can be applied in real-life, everyday situations. Each Odyssey of the Mind team selects one problem to solve, which must be completely executed by the team members with no outside adult assistance. Teams have to build, plan, design costumes, write scripts, and ultimately perform their solution at the event. Teams from throughout the United States and more than 25 countries participate in Odyssey of the Mind. The 2017-2018 Odyssey of the Mind Coastal Region Tournament was held at Swansboro High School on Saturday, February 24th, and that included 24 teams from across Onslow County. These Onslow County Schools teams were joined by approximately 50 other teams from across eastern North Carolina. At that regional event, nine Onslow County teams advanced on to the state tournament. That's quite a representation for one county. Tonight, though, we are here to look at our teams that have advanced on to the world competition. The North Carolina Odyssey of the Mind State Tournament was held at Wingate University on Saturday, March 24th, and after a lot of competition and teamwork, two of our Onslow County Schools have now advanced to the world competition. Tonight, we would like to recognize the Odyssey of the Mind teams from Richlands High School and Dixon Middle School. At this time, I would like to ask our two teams, their coaches and administrators, to come join us, to join me here at the podium, starting with Dixon Middle School. Our Odyssey of the Mind Dixon Middle School team is coached by Patricia Brown and includes team members Rachel Brewer, Grace Glasgow, Sam Coons, Jacqueline McCarthy, Frances Slater, Alyssa Weaver, and Morgan Wool. Mr. Eric Gruner also helped coach this team this year, and so we would like to present you guys with your certificates and wish you well as we head off to Ames, Iowa. The Richlands High School team, we would like to invite up to the podium, and that team is coached by Justine Smith. And that, and the team members for the high school team include Taylan Bachelor, Mackenzie Collarep, Isaac Hewitt, Alexander Schuman, and Jacob Zimmerman. These two teams, as I said, will be traveling on to Iowa State University to participate in OM World Finals from May 23rd to the 26th. So we just say congratulations and thank you to both of these teams for their outstanding accomplishments.
Michelle Chadwick, our science coordinator, will present our science awards.
At this time, I would like to ask Carrington Sides, Caroline Cuba, students at Trexler Middle School, along with your coach, Burl Evans, and Trexler Principal Lynn Jackson to join me at the podium. The Onslow County Schools Science and Engineering Fair celebrates original ideas in fields of science and engineering. Students compete at different levels, beginning at the school level and potentially ending at the international level depending on the division. These two students have taken this journey and are still rising to the top. Their project Stop Danger Zone, which utilized motion sensors to alert bus riders to oncoming vehicles while at the bus stop, won at the school level, district level, and placed second at both the Southeast Regional Science and Engineering Fair held at UNCW, as well as the 31st Annual North Carolina State Science and Engineering Fair on March 24th, 2018. Their second-place win in the junior division earned them a national bid to the Broadcom Masters Math Applied Science Technology and Engineering for Rising Stars. This competition is sponsored by the Society for Science and the Public, which inspires and recognizes our nation's young scientists, engineers, and innovators. Theres is now one of 3,500 projects from across the nation that has received this opportunity. In September 2018, 300 semifinalists will be announced, and in October, 30 finalists will be selected to win an all-expense-paid trip to the national competition to be held in Washington, DC. So congratulations to Carrington and Caroline for their outstanding work with the Science and Engineering Fair.
Mr. Anderson?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Stout, executive staff, and our audience tonight, we're always excited when we get to share an individual student's success story with our board and our audience. Tonight, we have a middle school student who started his own clothing line. What makes it extra special is the positive message this young man brings that he hopes will catch on. Very simply, his message is, "It's okay to be yourself. You don't have to fit in or be popular. You should be yourself, be comfortable with who you are, and it's okay to be different." Terrence Reese Jr., will you please join me up here at the podium? Terrence is a six, yeah. Terrence is a sixth grader at, from Northwoods Park Middle School. Now, over a recent holiday break, he was a little bored, and he asked his aunt to help him design a T-shirt. His aunt, being an interior decorator, turned on her computer, and when it was all said and done, Terrence developed a concept, and with a little help from his family, his clothing line was born. The giant junior slogan is encouraging kids not to fit in, but to be comfortable in their own skin. So tonight, we'd like to congratulate Terrence, not only for his entrepreneurial spirit, which is exemplified not only with Terrence, but in students across the Onslow County School System, but also for the positive message being sent about being yourself. Now, each year, Onslow Memorial Hospital hosts teen volunteers who are between 15 and 18 years of age to be a part of the hospital cadre of volunteer workers. The goal is to provide positive, energetic students who are possibly interested in health care with an environment and an opportunity to learn, help others, build friendships, and give back to the community. The program also aids departments that could use an extra set of hands. Originally started as candy strippers in the 1940s, the program has morphed into the current Volentine program. The junior volunteers work under adult supervision of the program coordinator and hospital and auxiliary staffs. The Candy Stripper name came from the traditional uniform that volunteers wore that looked like peppermint candy, although this outfit isn't frequently worn today. Volunteers, adults, and teens are integral to the success of the hospital thanks to their interactions with both nurses and patients. Volunteers help to make the hospital a little happier and friendlier. Volunteering can be a rewarding way to spend the summer, earn valuable community service credit for school, and decide whether to pursue a career in the medical field. At this time, I'd like to welcome and ask Ms. Charlotte Rodriguez, who is the president of the Onslow Memorial Hospital Auxiliary, to join me up front. And we're going to recognize our students tonight. These students are seniors, and she has a presentation for them. This is an honor chord that these students will be able to wear at their graduation. So we're going to just recognize those students that were able to join us tonight. So we're going to read the names from our high schools, and she's going to present the chords as we go through. From Dixon High School, we have Angel Brinson, Jalia Sablon Ariano, Anne Marie Shepherd, and Brenlee Williams. Representing Jacksonville High, students were Elise Campbell, Selena Examo, Phoebe Hamrick, Kira Helmstetter, David Nam, Leanna Sanford, Grace Sebestein, Kaylee St. Dennis. From Northside High, Justin Batista, Brooke Gruber, Reniqua Hayes, Emily Peck. From Richlands High School, we have Alyssa Powell, Anthony Roman, Selena Starr, Sabrin Vesur, and Norma Metta. Southwest High School is represented by Ayana Robinson. Swansboro High School, Dilmer Maraz. And from White Oak High School, Clarissa Wannapain, William Davis, and Gabrielle Smith. So congratulations to all of us and all the students that were here tonight. Here we go. How does that look like you did this just a few minutes ago on the log?
I'm in the restroom. We got a mother's camera.
Uh-oh.
Oh.
Kodak moment. There we go. There we are. And our final recognitions tonight for this part of the good news spotlight are going to focus on our principals, which is fitting because today is Principal Appreciation Day. So it's a good opportunity to recognize some of our school administrators. Professional development is important here in the Onslow County School System as it ensures that our students are receiving the best education possible from the best faculty members. Tonight, we would like to recognize four Onslow County principals who have recently completed the Distinguished Leadership in Practice, or DLP, program. DLP is a year-long program for practicing school principals designed by the North Carolina Principals and Assistant Principals Association. The program uses a non-traditional professional development model that aligns with the performance evaluation standards adopted by the State Board of Education. It is designed to limit principals' time away from their schools by allowing them to attend face-to-face sessions once every other month while accessing online assignments, materials, and coaching. Principals complete activities designed to build the capacity of their schools and their own capacity as distinguished school leaders. So tonight, we'd like to welcome the following principals to the podium and congratulate them on their accomplishment of completing the DLP program. We have Ms. Lee Bezzel, principal of Dixon Middle School. Tia Bolris. Tia Bolris, principal of Hunter's Creek Elementary School. Angela Garland, who's principal of Northwoods Park Middle School. And Denise Gartner, who is principal of Sandridge Elementary School. And Madam Chair, I would tell you that is our good news for this evening.
Thank you so much. Members of the board, I know you may have some items to share. Anyone? Okay, Mr. Reverend Churchwell?
Madam Chair, I have a few items I'd like to share. I had an opportunity to attend Northwood Park Middle School musical, and it was just extremely inspirational to see the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade graders playing their string instruments. It was very rewarding. And then also, I had an opportunity to spend some time at White Oak High School, and there I was able to visit three classes, Project Lead the Way. Had an opportunity to see our students and their creative minds as they crafted and constructed a lot of mechanical items, rebuilt a lot of robotics, and that was truly rewarding as well. Then had a chance to sit in one class where it was interesting because the students enjoyed the smaller atmosphere that allowed them to learn a great deal more and to participate in peer-to-peer learning. And I thought that was quite interesting, the caliber of students that we have in the class that don't mind helping their fellow students out in the learning experience. And then lastly, had an opportunity to sit down with two students that are participating in the Cherry Project. I know that they have their concert on Friday at 7 o'clock at White Oak High School, and with the many things that are going on in our district, the great thing- the many things that are going on in our district, the great things that are going on to the general public, if you can attend that, because I had an opportunity to sit down with two of the students of whom are participants in that project. And it's a opportunity for our students to reach out globally and teach others about musical instruments. The students that I spoke to, they are mentoring and teaching students from the Kabara slums of Nairobi, Kenya, and in doing that, they had to make a personal sacrifice with themselves by getting up early in the morning because of the time difference and appear at White Oak High School so they could Skype and teach those students in Nairobi, Kenya about how to play the various instruments. And it was such a rewarding conversation because I just marvel at their worldview as how it's being expanded and the opportunity to do outreach while you're still sitting in your same classroom. So again, the great things that our district is doing and to bear witness that our students understand that to give is a great thing to do. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Madam Chair. At our-- during our Good News Spotlight last month, we recognized a young man from White Oak High School who was selected as the National Military Child of the Year. And reading in the paper where he went to Washington DC to be recognized and greeted by Senator Burns, Senator Tillis, and April is the month of the Military Child. Had the privilege of attending a special program at Sandridge Elementary last Friday where I think they helped commemorate the military, April being the Military Child Month, with the performance of the 2nd Division Marine Corps Band. And that kinda attracted me a great deal, but it was just a wonderful event, a wonderful program. The kids enjoyed it and appreciate all that you did there. Also had an opportunity to attend the performance of the junior version of the Broadway musical Guys and Dolls presented by New Bridge Middle School. Kids did a great job during that time, for that program, and they're to be commended for that. And last week, two of our schools celebrated their Leader in Me program. They won at Blue Creek Elementary, and I always enjoy visiting the schools, particularly in those particular programs where these kids are learning leadership qualities based on the Franklin Covey Leadership Program. And it was just amazing the progress that they have made. And also at Dixon Elementary on Friday, sort of a double whammy there, they had Leader in Me Day, and once again, the kids were just exhibiting great leadership skills and being responsible young people. They also hosted an event, Rise Against Hunger. Part of the tour, about 200 first graders were in the multipurpose room bagging up rice and breakfast material to send to families in different countries. These are first graders. They raised over $3,000 to buy the food, and they were in there being assisted by young Marines and parent volunteers and grandparents who at a very young age have learned a very important lesson in life. And it was just a very moving experience to see these first graders having the best time, rocking and a-rolling, bagging the rice and the goodies and everything, to put on that truck to go feed families across this world. So it was just another special month and a lot of great things that are happening in the school system, and just so proud of what our kids are doing. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Wiggins?
Yes, several activities that I was able to attend. Of course, being an old former math teacher, I love to go to the math counts, and I attended the elementary math counts at Clyde Irwin. And then last night, I came here, they had the multiplication bee with the third graders. And I tell you, if I could be assured that I could have those kids, I probably would come out of retirement and start teaching math again. They really did a good job. I was so proud of them. Also, we were-- Mr. Taylor and I attended, and I don't know if anyone else was there, I think so, Ms. Thomas, the Avid Program, the presentation at Jacksonville High School. And their guest speaker was a counselor from UNC Asheville, Mrs. Privet. She really did a good job, but I was extremely impressed, and I want to be sure that I give those students credit. Four students from some of the high schools spoke to a crowd, and if you could have been there to hear them and see their confidence, and I surely want to give them credit, Taylor Nguyen from Jacksonville Commons Middle, Zaraya Berry from White Oak High School, Devin Andrews from Northside High School, and Sharia McDue from White Oak High School. The kids did a great job. Also, some of us were able to attend the musical at White Oak High School, Hunchback of Notre Dame. The time that those kids and that staff put in to making something like that come about, they did a great job. Usually, in a high school, you have a few that really have great, beautiful voices. I was just amazed at the singing and so many of them in that musical. Just a great job.
Thank you. And to kind of piggyback on what Mr. Wiggins said, in the play at White Oak, Hunchback of Notre Dame, I wanted to take a breath for those children because they were holding the note so long. They did a wonderful job. So they might make good runners if they can have that lung capacity. Also, a couple of us, I think Mr. Wiggins and myself, attended, I know Mr. Dr. Collins was there, attended the professional, our secretarial and professional staff who have a banquet every year, and we really enjoyed that. It's a nice time to have some camaraderie, a good meal, and to just enjoy a lot of laughter. I will say that I-- we had a couple of speakers that are our own speakers, and I didn't know that they could be so funny. Did you, Mr. Wiggins?
I tell you, I told one afterwards, she needed to give up her job, she needed to be a stand-up comedian.
But we did truly enjoy that. We appreciate those of you who came tonight for the Good News Spotlight, and if this is the only thing that you came for and you'd like to stay, we'd love for you to stay with us, but if not, and you'd like to take your leave, this would be a good time for you to leave. Thank you so much for coming. I hope you have a good evening.
Thank you for coming.
How you doing, Dr. Garretown? It's good to see you. Good to see you. You too.
Well, I did last year. I came in second.
Okay. I'm so proud of you. I know, well, I know they were called. Wow, that's a lot of people. It seems kinda empty after they leave, and because there were so many people, Commissioner Price has been hiding in the back, so welcome. Thank you for coming. The first item under our general business is the capital outlay budget and local current expense. Mr. Holloman?
Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the board, Mr. Stout. The proposed budgets for fiscal year 2019 for the local current expense fund and the capital outlay fund are included in your packet. These budgets were developed with input from all schools and departments. The superintendent's proposed budget was presented to the board during a budget workshop held at a special call meeting on April 23rd. At that meeting, budgetary items were highlighted by staff and reviewed by the board. In addition, the board held a public hearing on May 1st in order to receive comment from the public regarding the budget. The budgets in your packet remain the same as those presented to the board at the April 23rd special call meeting. This budget proposal is presented now for your consideration for approval.
Do we have a motion to accept the budget as it's presented?
Motion to approve.
And is there a second? We have a second. Any discussion or comments?
Just briefly, Madam Chair. As we discussed in our workshop when we held that, and I've brought up on numerous occasions, it would be much helpful to myself and perhaps other board members if we are able to take the budget that we have here for the local expense budget and break that out into sets of fashion that we can actually see the individual costs going out to the individual areas. In some cases, that if it's a particular department that is listed within the line items of the budget, that's easy to do, but when it comes to the first item on the top there, $1.003 million to teachers, there's no breakdown in that, and there's no way for us to really grasp where that amount of money is being spent and what locations it's being spent, whether it's being spent at the school locations or if it's teachers that we're employing at the central offices to assist us in something like that. So in the future, I would hope that we could come up with a process, that we could delineate out where these budgets are actually going to as opposed to just the, as we refer to, at the 10,000-foot level, as opposed to just getting way down in the weeds. Thank you.
As a footnote to Mr. Williams' comment, which I think is a very good comment, too, we had proposed that we would have a workshop, and at that time, Mr. Holloman will present the number of positions where they're going so that that will further enlighten the board as to how much of that money goes to teachers, how much is for administration. And we're planning a workshop on May 21st, and at that time, we're also hoping that we will have a meeting with our commissioners at the same date. So that information will be coming forward to us, and I look forward to it. Any other comments?
Madam Chair, I have a couple real quick, and I have some concerns, but they're not dollar concerns, which is normal, really. They're toward the process. Kind of piggyback on what Mr. Williams said, is this is the board's budget that will be provided to the county commissioners, yet we have very little input in the development. I would like to see a committee, you know, you've got a committee made, but no board members are part of that. I'd like to see somebody from the board have some input into that. I mean, millions of dollars were cut from our capital outlay requests because we just had to get it down to the $5 million number, but like, we could not prioritize as a board. The staff prioritize, which we don't really get to have any input in. And then the breakdown by the schools, the money for the schools, I was really kind of concerned last week when Mr. Williams has asked at least four years consistently for a breakdown of funds for the school, and I found on the Department of Education's website a breakdown for every school, every dollar amount, down to the half positions, how many school resource officers, how many counselors were at every school, including both county, state, and federal funds, and that really concerned me. This budget that we're voting on here today is the one we have the most flexibility with. The state sends us all the one, we don't really have a whole lot of choice in that, but we do have some flexibility here, and I would hope in the future that the board would just get a little bit more input into it.
Thank you. Would like to point out that the board does have the ability to make amendments throughout the year to any of our budgets, so that is permitted. Any other questions? Comments?
Wait, Ms. Wiggins.
I want to say that I respect the opinion and the right to express those opinions of my fellow board members, and what I'm about to say is my opinion, and I don't want the public, whether they're, to think that I'm speaking for the rest of the board. However, I do hope that other board members may feel as I do. I'm becoming very concerned about the message of transparency, and in particular, in reference to our financial budget. I want you folks that are here tonight, and those folks later that will be viewing on TV and listening on TV, to know that the transparency concern about the budget, I don't want the wrong message to be sent to our public, but I do want everyone to know that we, this board, the superintendent, the finance officer, and his staff, we're not trying to hide anything, we're not doing something that's wrong, and we're not misusing financial I have and will continue, I'll speak for myself, to serve the parents, the students, and the school staffs with honesty, integrity, and financial responsibility. This budget issue that I continue to hear on transparency, I want you, the public, and anyone else listening, to know that all is above board and all is well with our budget. The superintendent and the central office staff that I've honored to work with demonstrate every day, through your hard work, your character, and your expertise, that you're answering the job that you do, the passion that you have, and the challenge to lead students and support school staffs and teachers. In particular, I have the utmost respect for you, Mr. Holloman, and your financial Mr. Holloman follows local guidelines and regulations in preparing, presenting, and monitoring our Onslow County school budget. Mr. Holloman follows the same format for our budget that all school districts across North Carolina follow. Onslow County schools, we have a lot of internal audits and external audits. Mr. Holloman and his staff continue to pass these audits with flying colors. Both he and his staff have many awards for their professionalism and their expertise. I see no need to change a format of success. You mess up what's doing and happening in a good way. I cannot ask his staff for him, and would not, to do less or to do more. I want all to know that they have my vote of confidence as they continue the path of excellence. Thank you.
Other comments?
Madam Chair, as Mr. Wiggins says, this format has been used by this system for decades, even before you got on the board. This is a program budget. It is not a departmental budget where the city of Jacksonville, county commissioners, where they decide how many bailiffs are in the jailhouse, or how many sheriff cars or police cars. This is a program budget that supports students. If Mr. Holloman had the time, which he doesn't, even he would come up with all that information, it is not our decision to say, "Well, no, you need to put more teachers here or more programs here." That's their expertise. They deal with it every day. We meet once a month. They're working with these students and these teachers every single day, and I trust their good judgment. their good judgment. We are not, we're not a top, we're not governing from top to bottom. As Mr. Holloman has explained several times, we start with our schools. What are their needs? Yes, they have wants, just like everybody else. What are their needs? That information is communicated with our executive staff and our program directors. It is the superintendent's budget for the district, not for individual schools. I take exception to the comments made about me on social media that I'm about status quo. I take exception to them, because if you're status quo, you're stagnant. I've never been stagnant as a teacher and as a leader in this district. But we've got a very capable staff who is involved with planning and doing what's best for students. And when you see the PowerPoint, this is about instruction and instructional support, because the state doesn't provide everything. The federal government doesn't provide everything. It supports exceptional children. Technology and support, we have one of the best staffs in the state that are out in these schools every day, making sure not only that equipment works, but making sure children have access to programs that will help them learn. Oh, by the way, we've got a maintenance department who makes, builds the stage, I guess, as I've heard one person say before. They provided the stage so the students and the teachers can perform. And that takes, that takes time and money. Got to pay the power bills. I don't care what the power bill is at a particular school. That's your job, Mr. Myers, and I think you're doing everything you can to lower that power bill. Insurance, transportation. By the way, a lot of people think the state and federal government pays for our athletic programs and our cultural arts, band and orchestra and chorus. Uh-uh, that comes out of local funds to support students. I respect the work that you folks do every single day, because our function, our primary focus is children, is students. And as I look to my left and as I look to my right, I count seven school board members, not one. This is not a one-member school board. If we're going to change the policy, 8100, it should be up to the Board of Education, not one member, not two. I'm voting for the budget, because this is about students, and it's about teachers. If we, if it would help anybody to say, well, this program is providing 18, 15 teachers, fine, that's okay. But the format has worked. We don't get into micromanaging, and I hope we never do, because that is your decision. This is not top to bottom. This is coming from the most important level, and that's our schools. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Chair. It has been said, and I think Mr. Wiggins mentioned something to the effect, that we hope that the narrative of concerns isn't being projected, that there may be some things that are not being revealed to the general public. My sentiments is exactly that, whatever the individual board member's concerns are as it relates to clarity of understanding, that it stand on those merits alone, and hopefully the narrative isn't being shaped to imply that we're not exercising our fiduciary responsibility, nor are we operating in integrity, with transparency being at the forefront and not the end result. So to the general public, that's been my stance, and just want to make sure the narrative is being shaped in such a fashion that it's not conveying the wrong message. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Other comments?
Yes, Madam Chair. I wasn't going to speak anymore with regards, as I'd spoke my piece at the beginning. I'm not sure where we're coming up with this narrative. It is our budget as a board. It is the public's budget, and we are representatives of the public. And as such, it has always been my experience as a longtime criminal fraud investigator working out in the system, that if we don't have complete transparency, and if we can't see to the levels where it's going on, then things can happen. I'm not implying that we're misappropriating anything, because I don't know where the money goes. All I see it is at the top level, and all I'm asking for is an exploded budget, so that I could sit down and compare one school to a next, understanding that we have variety of different schools with different ages and different communities, and knowing that that's going to happen. But there has been nothing that I've implied that would indicate that I thought there's improprieties going on with this. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wiggins. Mr. Holloman, correct me if I'm wrong. Our budget is not, is a continuation budget. It is not an expansion budget. And our original amount of money that we plan with is the funding formula that we have with the county commissioners. Am I correct?
Right. This budget is based on the funding formula and continuing the programs that we have done in the past.
And if anyone here, or any of the public, look on our website and get this budget, you will also see that the Board of Education uses part of its fund balance and tax reimbursements to supplement any additional funds that are needed within this local current expense fund. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that for the public. Please look on your website, look at this budget, and if you have questions, you need to call 455-2211 and ask to speak to Mr. Holloman, because he will be the man that can answer most of your questions. And I'm sure if you ask the board members individually, we can give you an answer. However, it'll be our answer. It will not be the answer from our financial director. So I would encourage you to ask Mr. Holloman. I'm sorry, I'm putting you on the spot, but that may help.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And then on May 21st, we will come back together as a board and look at some of the details that are in this budget. If there are no other comments, and we've had a motion and a second, I think we've had some very strong dialogue this evening, I ask all in favor of this budget to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
And the ayes have it, and thank you, Mr. Holloman, and thank your staff, too.
Thank you.
Next is a policy that we talked about a little bit on the 23rd of April, and I believe Mr. Lane is coming up to talk about this one.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Education, Mr. Stout, executive staff. At last month's meeting, Mr. Shannon shared with you the details that were outlined in the General Statute 115(c)(172), which required local education agencies to form a business advisory council. In summary, it states that the Board of Education will form a business advisory, I'm sorry, that the Board of Education will receive assistance from a business advisory council in the performance of its duty to provide career and technical education, instruction, activities, and services. In accordance with the requirements of state law, the business advisory council will serve the board by identifying economic and workforce development trends related to the training and educational needs of the community, and advocating for strong local career and technical education programs, including career pathway development that provides work-based learning opportunities for students and prepares students for post-secondary educational certifications and credentialing for high-demand careers. Last month, you were asked to consider Policy 2670 for future consideration, and tonight, I'm respectfully requesting that the Board of Education adopt the new policy, Policy 2670, the Business Advisory Council.
Do you have a motion to accept the policy?
To move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Question, just to make sure. On page two, near the bottom of Section B, preference will be given to candidates who reside within the school administrative unit. I assume this policy is being directed for all school systems, large and small?
Yes, yes, sir.
I can just visualize a very small school system, that they would maybe have trouble coming up to meet this requirement.
Well, because there's an emphasis on the regional workforce.
Right.
Again, it's broader than just Onslow County.
Okay. My second question is, our regional technical center, would be, let's say, once Duplin, Jones, and LeJune establish their council, be opportunities for us to, or you to meet to discuss the regional center, or?
Most certainly. And we have continuing meetings right now as we develop programs and continue to work on the staff and the options for transportation, again, scheduling and programs that are going to be placed at the school center.
And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Shannon has said that we've had such a committee in place for several years, if I'm not mistaken. So I think we're pretty much ahead of the game.
Yes, sir. This is formalized as a committee that was already in place.
That's great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a quick one, Madam Chair. Has this changed since you presented it to us the last time? There's been no change to it, has there?
No, sir.
The policy?
That's correct.
Any other questions? Here none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
We've had no one sign up to speak at our first session or our second, so at this time, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? And a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening.